I got this car as well?
No, as far as I know, he's gonna be here. Sometimes it's traffic.
The normal prices are five dollars a change. But they're very, very nice.
This chair is not gonna be that much.
More ones like that.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good place for us.
Yeah, right?
All right, there we go.
Thanks, John.
John, that's all.
We're in.
Still here, isn't he? Oh, he's in there.
Chad, this isn't gonna work.
They're telling me he lost his seat.
Huh?
He lost his seat. We're gonna get him back.
Can we get him a broken seat?
Oh, can't do that. Which is ridiculous. You know, what we should do inside of make them thin lots of little things so they don't wanna be in the way.
It's made since you were here. It isn't made since you were here.
Because it looks terrible. Did you see the difference between on the three boulevards there?
Let him fill in, but it's me.
These have all cement walls, brown tags, this building, photos, all tagged, all covered. I can't believe that. Every week I'm in such a tizzy and trying to take before pictures. And I drive afterward around, I'm like, oh, can I take before?
Lisa, do you wanna start? I'll go across here, never mind crossing.
What's that they were doing?
Yeah, we just talked about it, because they weren't by my house when we were...
Very good, very good.
So that's why there was a lot of water.
Up for a stroll up in Hillhurst.
Or give us a copy?
I've got the brief one.
Yes, let me give us a nice copy too.
Which is really very, very nice. I gotta make one of the rest.
Really? Who'd hypothetically cart? Who takes the cart? People take them, huh? No kidding?
For charity play, don't make me get out of here.
Call order finance committee?
Oh, good man.
First one up, looks like a mixed-up session. Do we wanna move that to the bottom, or do we wanna do it now?
No, let's hold it till the end. So we'll just have to remember to recess, so I answer instead of joining.
Okay. 2013 audit discussion. We've had lots of discussion on the audit.
I don't know whether anybody has any additional questions about that, or whether we... I think it's certainly a good audit, so something to be proud of.
Yes.
And it's already come out of committee, so technically, we don't have to vote on it again here.
Just for discussion.
Just more discussion if anybody had any other questions.
Very, very good question. Well, it's not really a question, I mean, I've asked for a few reports, so... You're not getting it. So that's my only concern, is not getting access to these reports.
So, still waiting on a couple of reports that will get some more information on... And still on these plus and Ds and dotting Is.
Okay.
John, there were a couple of other reports that John was looking for, but I don't know that they're gonna be made available to us. So, you know, I think just given that, you know, we need to approve this by the end of the month, so I think we'll just plan to have it on the agenda for Monday night.
Any questions? Okay. Your motion to recess finance.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call order government operations. Orders to amend and ordinance to amend Chapter 138 commercial property inspection.
You wanna touch on that, or we just...
Is anything you want me to add? There's a public hearing held at least, I wasn't...
No, I think we're pretty good with this, to move forward.
Say that again, let's move it forward.
Well, that's true, then we need a motion, still the motion, all right?
Yep, I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, excellent. Uh, Mr. Polster, for the quality quo in this case, an ordinance to amend Chapter 248 parking meters.
Oh, I was saying, get the wrong thing.
Rental certificate.
Rental.
I'm usually down further. Orders to amend Chapter 210, revisions to rental certificate.
That's...
Stop that! Is that better?
That was... Again, we just said, one person spoke at the public hearing, so...
Just to recap, the changes that were being made here were pertaining to just...
Section...
Inspection.
Inspection.
That just allows us to report a section eight?
Yes. Questions, discussion?
I guess it's just another way of sharing services, I think, with the city's connected in with municipal housing authority, to be on one unified code with one unified rental certificate, and again, just another way of sharing services. Municipal housing is paying for the service, there's nothing free on this, they are paying for the service, but I think it's just a good way for the safety of our tenants and residents as well, to roll in the same page and unify this process.
Mr. Polster, do we have to... When Mr. Homannick was here, now, was this contingent upon it being okay with HUD that we're doing this? I thought that from the discussion, he was saying something that, you know, as long as it's approved through HUD, and HUD's okay with this. I do recall him saying something similar to that, so...
Our inspection and MHA's inspection were a little bit different, but they have covered all the bases, so that it would meet the criteria that HUD sets forth, and eliminate any duplication.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any problems? That's what I was concerned about, he did talk about that.
Right, that's my understanding, Mr. Polster.
Okay.
Other questions, new discussion?
You said SMHA is paying for it, but could you just clarify that a little more?
Tenants, landlord will pay for it, just as any other inspection.
So it's not SMHA? You said...
No, but it's not free, it's not a free service, is what I'm saying.
No.
Correct, there are fees that the city will be...
Okay, I just wanted to clear on who, because you said SMHA, but my understanding was it's the landlord's...
It's the landlord that would pay.
Okay. If landlord's here, SMHA, that's what they're gonna believe.
No, that's correct, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other? Okay.
No, I'll move it.
All right, next second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Very good, and I understand that you've heard of acting discussions for the elderly checking session?
Are we... Why are we putting it in a mixed-up session?
It was requested the afternoon.
I think because we're going to be talking about, you know, a particular company and...
There's some things dealing with specific contract, so it could be legal, what I'm understanding is...
If we're gonna be discussing a certain situation, if it's just broad about the city's affirmative action, policy, that kind of thing, but if we're discussing a certain instance, that's the kind of discussion that based on what's said could be deciding things about contracts and potential litigation down going, that would be probably for a second session.
Yes, I'll ask for a motion to recess government operations.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Excellent. Okay.
A call to order health and recreation. Mr. Howard? The public hearing amending Chapter 186 of the health and recreation.
So, as council's aware, we are getting new boats this year. We're getting the paddle boats back, we're gonna set up small, three regular, which are four-person boats, and we're going with the three swan boats, paddle boats, which those are two-person boats. And the ordinance hasn't been changed since '03, and they were kind of...
1903? That's probably...
Because of major transportation by guns.
So, we wanted to seek approval to change the rates for the swan.
It would be eight dollars for a half hour, twelve dollars for an hour, and the four-person would be six dollars for a half hour and eight dollars for an hour. It only brings the four-person up a dollar apiece, and the swan, we are anticipating that this is a larger attraction for the lake, and that's going up almost double basically for the swan, from the original two-person boat. I might send it in a nutshell.
Why would the swan be such an attraction? That you know...
In Boston, in Central Park, in New York City, if you go down to their locations, you can find thirty swans in Boston on their lake, and it's a huge attraction every summer for people to come out and enjoy the ambiance of the park, and be on the paddle boats compared to an original, basic paddle boat. It's kind of a nice feature for the youth to come up and enjoy, and also, when you go into the Central Park and have a wedding in our beautiful Rose Garden, and then go across the way and take pictures in a swan next door fountain, it's kind of an attraction to be in itself. And they are actually charging like fifteen to twenty dollars an hour to be in Boston on the swans in Central Park.
Where's the... I get it. Ms. Porozal?
Well, first of all, I see a lot of marriage proposals coming up on the swan. But I would assume that we're also charging more because the swans are decorative and cost more than the traditional models, so they have a cover of costs.
Yes, and to be... You know, if we... This is more of a service for the city residents. We're not looking to make money here, but we are looking to make sure that the maintenance of the boats and everything, we don't wanna get back to a situation where we were a year ago and didn't have any. So, we always wanna keep the revenue generating from those to put back into the boats and to get more boats down there.
And what's the cost, the initial cost, because I'm not seeing here, we're getting new boats, obviously, because we didn't have a swan before.
Right. Cost of the boats, cost of the boats are two thousand dollars apiece. They are not, they are commercial boats, they're not there every day that you can go buy it at a sporting goods store or anything like that. They're special ordered out of Kansas, from one of our vendors that we have, so they range about two thousand dollars, and for any of the bells and whistles, we can go onwards and upwards from there, but we stayed at a very reasonable cost.
And we're getting how many?
Six total.
How many swans?
Three swans, three regulars.
Okay, all right. And I don't see here, where is this in the budget?
In our current budget, this was paid for out of proceeds that were to keep the casino, the grant money that we had for the casino, to keep that up and running. So, this just adds to what our plans are to hopefully bring a concessionaire to the concession, and that we'll have the paddle boats ready to go, keep everything thriving as much as possible.
So that's what the budget lines, but we're... Central Park Casino, money. Okay. Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good.
And the public hearing, what date?
Call for a public hearing next Monday, maybe a week after that.
Okay.
Mr. Erickson? So, out of the past, are our fees, we've changed the language that they can be amended differently, so we're not gonna have a public hearing, or a general matter change of paddle fees, are we gonna all say, and we'll say, but through resolution versus...
Ordinance.
Public and ordinance, yeah. Are we gonna do the same thing here?
That's a good question.
That would be my recommendation, as the person writing.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question.
No, it's a good question. Any other questions?
No.
All right, call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Move the... Yes, sir. We did move the idea.
Do we have a call for public hearing?
I'm moving it.
Mr. Polster?
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay.
Call to order public safety. Ordinance to amend Chapter 248 vehicle and traffic. Mr. Reggie?
Yes, most of you are familiar with this, and the lady that came last week, from Mr. Donald, from, I believe, King's Row, she called up, she had concerns, she doesn't park on the street, she had concerns about loading and unloading, and that is covered, it's on page nineteen of what we have there.
Yep.
Then it is covered. Exceptions for oversized vehicles, the article should not prohibit the parking of oversized vehicles on public streets for any of the public activities. One is loading or unloading of persons or property. Two, service to the property in the vicinity, emergency repairs, any emergency vehicle of any political, subject to the earth, wheelchair accessible van, so that's covered with her, and I did send this to her, I mailed it to her, and I haven't heard back from her, so that's basically it. This is an ongoing problem, especially on one street in Mount Pleasant, and it's been ongoing, and Mr. Politico did some research, this is what he came up with, and I think it's a good plan to turn that to this.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So this covers, it looks like this covers, we took away the number of tires and things like that, and it said, made it dimensional and based on weight, correct? Like, so for people who have googlies, they would be able to legally park on the street?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a...
Any more questions coming? I think it's good, and we're ready to move forward with this.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance to amend Chapter 248 parking meters. Mr. Faltz, public hearings held, and unless there were any comments based on that, this is just, again, a little tweak to the code, because of any parking meters, kiosk, or storm. Have a question.
Has anybody used it yet? I haven't used it, I have one bag.
You told me there is some credit card revenue coming in from people already using it.
Good, good. Good start. Need to move this?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Parking of Campbell Avenue and Hillside Park. Mr. Corsha?
Yes. We have a title there. Hillhurst Park. It is Hillhurst Park, let me kill this. Thank you for putting this on, I appreciate it, and Mr. Reggie's on board with me as well. I spoke with him about this last week. At the end of every summer, the youth grill and the Boys and Girls Club that's connected here, we do a parent survey of all the parks that are utilized, that we work through, through CBG contract, again, Hillhurst and Stein, and one of the parent surveys came back last year, the second year row, about the lack of parking at the Hillhurst Pool, where young folks, particularly families with children, had to park their car on the other side of the street, which would be the south boundary of Campbell Avenue, I guess, and there's only four parking spots there, totally, so what they end up doing is they park illegally in the park, into the handicap area, just to unload their children, and so on and so forth. But as I gave you a picture in front there, myself and Councilman Reggie were there this morning, or afternoon, actually, during lunch, as you can see, those are two photos of the entire length of Hillhurst Park on Campbell Avenue, and that side, there's absolutely no parking whatsoever around at this time, and I think Mr. Reggie can talk about that a little bit later on, but what we're looking to do is to see if we can have parking included on that side of the park, for families to get out, park on Campbell Avenue, enjoy the pool facilities, get out on the proper side, and walk their children directly into the park instead of crossing Campbell Avenue, which they currently have to do. According to John Cucho, I think is here, John estimates about another thirteen to fifteen spots might be created, there isn't back of us, so...
Actually, did a statue of you.
Good.
Like to see it. I did look at it, I looked for the history of it, in fact, in 2001, that the parking was restricted there, don't see very much.
I don't?
Don't see in the files why it was coming at the time. My recollection is that there were some issues, concerns with children running in the cars.
Right.
If you want, shall I continue?
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, thank you.
So I did look at it, and I took my own pictures, actually, but...
Good, very good.
I'm sure yours are better.
Well, no, we're walking, choosing. We did pass it around to city staff to get their spin on it, and nobody had too large a concern of it, because there was parking there at one time. What I would like to do, if you're in favor of it, is restrict an area around the crosswalk and entrance to the park of about a hundred feet or so, so that there's really good sight distance. That would be my only concern, I wouldn't want the sight distance to be restricted, so if they park right up to the driveway and right up to the crosswalk, the car coming through would not be able to see pedestrians standing on the side of the road, who might dart across the street. So I estimated about thirteen spaces, including this hundred-foot or so area that we'd keep restricted, so that you could see well, and also access, you know, coming out of the park too for the handicapped individual. Yep. Can we get a crosswalk in there too? Can you get the street painted? Is it painted? There is a crosswalk. I guess I didn't notice that, I didn't recognize it. Is it in your picture? Well, it's probably all worn out, isn't it? No, it's not bad. It is pretty good there. Yeah. Okay, so we do have a cross, and then we go all the way to 12th, then, right? We move it all the way to 12th? Because currently, your park is permitted, I see exactly where you are. Yep, that's exactly right. So, no, not to 12th, just past Perry.
Just past where?
Perry Street, on the other opposite Perry Street. Because then you can park further up, beyond all that. But again, you can park to the corner. Parking is so important there, and again, we went and felt, you know, about the two houses there on the corner there, I think it's, this is right where the park... It kept it, we didn't allow the parking around the curve. So it's just at the beginning there, so you can see where I recommend, right after that secondary driveway to the park starts. So I think, you know, twelve, thirteen spots is a pretty good number, and certainly should help the situation out, and I think you were right on the ball, indicating that it will help people not to park in the handicap, parking in the park. I think that's key, because that's... Yeah, so I think by doing this, that certainly will improve that situation. Yeah, I think it's important. Again, we want it, we insist that the lifeguards don't park there either, from the Boys and Girls Club, we make them park on the side streets, because they're good enough to walk, and they have no families, but again, this is really for residents who have families with the strolls, who are trying to get to the park, and unfortunately, we only had three or four spots there on the other side of the street, and quite honestly, it was very impossible for some of these folks to get in there, so... So we can do it, and we'll certainly monitor it, and if it becomes an issue for some reason, you know, we can just knock it away then, you know, but I didn't get any negative responses from anyone, especially considering that we're looking to keep that area clear, so that there's good vision. And we actually talked to a few neighbors as well...
I did, and I brought it up to the Neighborhood Association Wednesday night too, and there was no pushback from any of the folks.
Right, Jackie Heard from Bellevue, we spoke with her prior to this, and she was all in favor of it as well, and there's two neighbors directly across the street we spoke to prior to, so, at least, you know, the neighbors are all in for it, and again, it's a beautiful park, beautiful pool, and we certainly wanna utilize it with safety of our kids as well. Campbell is a priority street, so it's not an issue for during winter months, because they certainly wouldn't be able to park there when there's snow.
But that part is priority, John. I won't tell you your job, but it's only up to Cherry Street, it's priority.
Maybe missing signs then, because I was pretty sure that it went right to Old...
It hasn't been, just so you know. But if you wanted to double check, it's only up to the point of Fairview and Campbell's priority, then it's both sides' problem.
And we don't need any public hearing or anything else? Something we do with the staff, if everyone's in agreement. Yes. Is Mary okay? Yep. Very good, thank you. Thank you. Do we need a vote on this, or how do we proceed?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any other business for public safety? Oh, sorry.
No, yes, that's okay. I just wanted to know, last Mr. Pulchos here, if there's an update on the red wine and Auburn Street signage, painting, whatever's being done?
Actually, John asked me earlier about that. I do know that we have sufficient enough equipment in-house to build the walklights at the intersection, we have not done it yet, we've been tied up with other projects, and did repaint the intersection to make sure that the crosswalks are, you know, in good shape, and probably, I told John, probably within another week or two, you'll start to see some kind of action there to show that we are starting to work there. I did promise you that this construction season, that it would be done, and I'm certainly gonna maintain that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Certainly.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Okay, call to order public service and utility, for the phone engineering services for North Fair and Creek Pump Station replacement. Any other, Ms. Porozal had some questions?
I didn't have any questions, I wanted to know where we're at with it, I wanna keep this moving forward, I don't wanna come, you know, six months from now and have no action on this.
Recommendation was brought to the council, the lowest responsible bidder.
I guess I'm engaging my colleagues at this point, that had questions or concerns, I just wanna make sure this is staying in top of mind awareness, because it's not something we can just not agree with and do nothing about.
I can answer your questions, is this why I'm here again?
So... Mr. Reggie? Okay, I guess one of my concerns, I did take the tour, whenever that was, the month before, and Mr. Collier was there too, and I'd like to see maybe another proposal for that to be, utilize the same building and not rebuild, instead of rebuilding that building. I think some of us that were there were over the mind that maybe that can be saved and used again.
As an existing pump station?
I'm sorry?
As a pump station?
Yes.
Okay, do you want, do you recommend I do another RFP for a feasibility study, on whether it can be utilized, and the flood protection can be built into that? We could do another RFP, but, you know, it's gonna delay this project even more, and just so you know.
Mr. Erickson?
In one of the prior conversations, we talked about the engineering reports, and there was a report from B&amp;L that was referred to, that kind of talked about shifting potential, and I haven't seen that yet, so I was wondering if that is something that we've been able to look at?
There was a report that was done by B&amp;L, it was the first feasibility study, Mr. Winckles submitted that to FEMA, it does mention that there is possibly some shifting in the building, they couldn't pinpoint exactly when, whether it was from FEMA or pre-existing from some of the ice jams, but there was a concern, there was a reference from Dante Geotechnical Study about some shifting in the building.
I read the one from Dante, the one from B&amp;L, I hadn't gotten their...
I have it, I have it now.
Okay.
Mr. Fromm was able to get that information to me, so I did get it today, and I'll, you guys, show that with me if you want to.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at it, because I think my concern is similar to Mr. Reggie's, you know, if, you know, lots of things shift, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's spoiled, right, or it can't be fixed, or that it's a problem, so I'd like to make sure we understand the full parameters here before we move forward.
Give you a copy of that?
Can you make a copy also?
Absolutely. It was a study that was done in March 2012, and then revised October 2012, just so you know, a long ago the study was done, so certainly I would make that available to you, but to Ms. Poroz's point, then you should take a look at it and be prepared to do something again in two weeks, as opposed to...
Do you wanna look at that study, and then discuss two weeks before we do another RFP, and several months to do any repairs again?
Well, we'll start with as quickly as possible. I do have another question, though, in terms of FEMA, where Mr. Olson said that you applied for a FEMA grant on this?
We did.
Okay, the application to FEMA was for what, to actually replace, or was it to repair?
It was two. During the FEMA, there were a couple, there was probably seven different representatives from FEMA that came in, all project managers, each one had a different... The final one was submitted as a replacement, and it was rejected, and there is an appeal letter out, so it is under appeal currently.
So we didn't, we only asked for a replacement, we did not suggest...
So, we didn't, we only asked for a replacement, we did not suggest repair?
We suggested repair the first time the FEMA representative looked at the study and said we should be going for full mitigation and replacement because of the shifting, so we did a change order to the existing request to FEMA to do a replacement, and it was, that's when it was rejected.
Okay, so, all right. I'll talk to you a little bit more about, you know, if you talk about what, the reasons for rejection and, you know, those kind of things.
There's a percentage, there's some rules there with regards to the replacement cost versus the repair cost.
Okay.
There's some rules that they follow. If fifty percent of it, the replacement for the new, then you go with replacement.
And I think that's important, the information for us to have, if we're going to be discussing replacement versus repair.
You do know that the money is already appropriated to replace the pump station, you did that last year.
I know, but the thought is if we can save some of that money...
Well, if we get reimbursed, it's great too.
Right, absolutely, that would be great, and since that's not on the table right now, since we've been rejected on both applications, so we would have to spend the money, so if we could spend less, that would be ideal, but we don't want to put anybody in jeopardy either, so, take a look at it. Could you put forward the information, those, we were saying the ratios, whether repair versus replacement?
I can look in Bill's files, Bill has all those files, and I can dig those up for you, and I'll get those.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For you, are there any other questions? Okay, motion to adjourn? Thank you very much, Mr. Fromm.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn?
Well, I'll recall Finance, or is there anything, I guess, if there's anything in plans that's not executive session, but everyone's in this...
Yeah, it's all executive session, right.
So, I'll recall Finance, and then we'll go to...
I'll move, go into executive session.
Second.
Second. All in favor going to executive session?
Aye.
Are you ready to say something?
Matt, question on the affirmative action under office of public law, the requirements, he said, contract compliance is...